Let me try that again. Thank you, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session Tuesday, May 24th, 2016. I am starting this meeting at 6:10 PM, and we just would like to apologize for the inconvenience of time here. Mr. Lance, would you please do the roll call?
Mr. Allen.
President.
Mr. Baltimore.
Here.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Hodges.
President.
Mr. Johnson. Here. Ms. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Claiborne. Moving on to invocation, Mr. Allen.
You can also take a few minutes. One of my best friends lost his mother this weekend, and it got me thinking about how loss affects us in many, many different ways, whether it be through a loved one like a parent or relative in any sort. Our community has tons of needs and is dealing with tons of issues of loss, and so it's just kind of heavy on my mind today. So we just take a moment and keep those of us that we know and love who are dealing with loss at this moment in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to pledge allegiance, Mr. Majors.
All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Moving on to communications, Mr. Claiborne.
Young folks, would you come forward, please?
And ladies and gentlemen, this is Mr. Lenwood Sloan. He's Scholar in Residence at the Harrisburg City School District, and also tonight we have Kirsten Keys, who's the Public Relations Coordinator for the Harrisburg School District, standing in for Superintendent Ms. Berney.
And ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to present to you the young citizens of Harrisburg. Yes, ma'am.
We are Harrisburg High School SciTech Campus.
Our purpose here was to get more close with and learn more about the council.
We will spread our message by interacting with the city council and the county commissioners to address our problems and to revitalize.
Would you go to the mics as you speak, because we want to make sure that we hear everything that young people have to say.
So we'll spread our message by interacting with the youth council, I mean with the city council and the county commissioners.
And that way we can address our problems and revitalize the youth council.
We will be reviewing the resolution with students and teachers from several schools around the district using the forum and lyceum method.
We collected our research by going to the city council, the county commissioners, the House and the Senate, as well as attending a program at the Capitol which taught us more about citizenship and the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendment.
We have invited Harrisburg School District teachers from high school and middle schools to elect representative candidates for the youth council.
They will be invited to an orientation in SciTech Campus on June 1st.
We each came up with a way like to recruit like young students like to join our organization, whether it came to presentations or an article.
In September, we will begin monitoring the caucus process at each of the schools, and in October, we will present all of the candidates. My name is Jayle Wilson. During this project, I shadowed Councilperson Shemaine Daniels, head of Building and Housing. When I first started the group, I thought we would just be meeting various members of the government of Harrisburg. I didn't think we would be writing the article or that we would be talking to you about the youth city council. My favorite part of doing this was taking a tour of the Capitol, because it was very -- lots of the rooms were very detailed and had lots of history behind it, and my takeaway from it was the lyceum, because it helps me when I need to speak in front of groups.
Hi, my name is Ernest Fraser. I journeyed experience like with Shadowing Mr. Majors. During that whole experience, my first follow-up is was like kind of iffy, because I didn't know if I was going to like or not, but my teacher knew me kind of well, so when she asked me, I kind of figured I could actually find something that I actually got into during the project. My favorite part was doing the grand review, because it gave me like a better, good history lesson, but also had like the fun adventure parts, so I wouldn't be so much feeling like I'm at school doing some kind of like little history lecture. If I had to like one takeaway from my whole experience is I learned how seriousness and silliness together, you could actually feel like to get your point across just by combining the two together to make one strong point to a huge audience.
I'm Marco Batista. I was assigned to shadow Ms. Destiny Hodges. When I first joined this group, I thought we were just going to meet with several people from different levels of government to learn about them, and when Mr. Sloan brought up the revitalizing the youth city council, I was a bit unsure at first, but over time I grew more interested. My favorite part about being in this experience has been being able to question Mr. Bolton about the citizenship test being a graduation requirement, and my takeaway from this has been being able to learn how legislation goes from on the paper into action.
Hi, my name is Hong Lee, and I wish to shadow Wanda Williams and her Committee of Administration. And when I received this opportunity, I knew that would be a great chance to explore the political atmosphere of Harrisburg. These days, you just don't see a lot of Harrisburg teenagers be part of this kind of program and to learn about Harrisburg's politics and how politics works in general in our state government. And we've been involved in many events regarding education about this and experience, and my favorite moment was when we toured the WGBH news station and to understand how politicians convey their thoughts on live television, and that just helped me to understand my ability to convey thoughts, how to convey ideas clearly and to be stronger myself, to understand the triangle, to see the audience and to see the clock and to see myself, to see how I am able to communicate clearly and to help people become leaders of tomorrow and succeed.
Hello, I'm Alexis Simonton-Romison, and in the beginning, I had began shadowing Cornelius Johnson, and with that, I -- like when I was first introduced to the committee, I was, I mean, to the program, I didn't really want to be into it because I didn't want to become a teacher. So as I proceeded, I found out that it really wasn't about becoming a teacher, more of learning how to present myself and like learning different techniques such as lyceum and forum to present a like a strong statement. And my favorite, like the favorite, what am I trying to say? Favorite event that we had took part in was when we went to the state Capitol and we went to go talk to Ms. Patty Kim, and with that, I learned like how a guy gained resources, and I learned how to talk to her and that I could talk to her. And then my takeaway would be that I've gathered a lot of resources, so if I ever have a problem or if I need to talk about something that's going on in my city, I know who to go to.
Hi, my name is Jaylee Ortiz. I shadowed Councilman Jeffrey Baltimore, and when I first began this experience, I really just saw it as a way to make Harrisburg great as it should be and as it is, and I realized that it's so much more than just about being in your community, it's also about being involved in your government. And my favorite experience was when we visited the county commissioners, and I was able to present my idea on showcasing people, well, students from Harrisburg that have done big things in the world and using them as inspiration for current students. And one takeaway that I have from this is learning how the government flows and how they're all connected and how that every decision that's made in government influences our everyday life as citizens.
Hi, I'm Destiny Perez. I shadowed Cornelius Johnson as well as Alexis. When I first started this club, I thought it'd be boring because it was about politics, but as I got more invested in it, I found that it's actually really interesting, and my favorite experience of this is touring the Capitol, because I'd never been in the building before, and the artwork is beautiful, and I guess I learned a little history facts on it during the tour. And something I'm just going to take away from this is lyceum, because I can use it now in school as well as in the future.
You know you're very busy. I want to thank you for allowing us to present the progress of this young group, and they will be meeting with teachers and students and city council, student council, to bring a roster of candidates, representing candidates for the resolution of the youth council to your September meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Sloan.
And we invite you all to join us on June 1st at SciTech Campus.
Okay, just want to hold up for a minute, Mr. Sloan, because I don't know if council members might want to make a statement, but I do want to correct. Ms. Kirsten Keys is here representing Dr. Sybil Knight, who is our superintendent. She couldn't be here tonight, and I also want to acknowledge Ms. Felton behind. Ms. Felton. And, Mr. Sloan, I just want to say thank you for your time, your patience, your guidance and support, and this is such a promising event for the young people in the city of Harrisburg. They say our students in the city of Harrisburg don't have any skills or knowledge or abilities, but this certainly tells the city of Harrisburg residents and others a different story. So thank you very, very much for all the time and effort that you put in for our students.
Thank you very much. The young students have to step away to catch buses in the past, but they are watching on Channel 20.
Okay, okay.
So thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. And council members, did you'd like to say anything real, real quick, because they have to catch their bus?
Just thank you guys for coming down and, you know, being leaders, not only within your schools, but within your communities, and that really says a lot. And you don't realize the impact that you have on your peers, seeing you as leaders and seeing you paying attention to what's happening in government and how that translates to how they can start doing the same thing as well. So thank you for your leadership, and shout out to Ms. Felton, my old social studies teacher. Former.
Okay.
But thank you guys for coming down.
Real quick, anyone else? Anybody else? Okay. Well, thank you so much, and I agree with you when you started out. We met you here in the city council chambers. All of you were not willing to speak about anything, and you have just been exceptional. You're just, now you're speaking well and you're not shy anymore. At least you're smiling this time, too. So thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Sloan. We certainly appreciate it.
We'll be watching on Channel 20.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Moving on to approval, I'm sorry, moving on to courtesy of the floor. Does anyone to my right like to come to the mics? Please do so now.
My name is Mr. Boyd, and once again, I like a good show. Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, the population is decreasing on a daily basis. I would like to remind this council once again, and also the mayor of our great city, not yours. Once again, I will stand here, and perhaps it looks like being defiant, but I'm standing here telling the truth. We will keep asking this question. We ask for closure here. We have people that sleep under bridges. We can look into people's eyes that have nothing. But then again, we would rather make sure that the Broad Street Market, as they say, they are solvent. But guess what? When you are solvent, you are supposed to pay something. The Broad Street Market pays nothing, not even a dime, but then once again, they're doing great, okay? The Civil War Museum, which is in a park, Reservoir Park, that I played as a child, $183,000 to $185,000 was requested by the Honorable Mayor approximately maybe a year ago that you must pay something. Once again, Civil War Museum pays nothing. I'm asking something. Why are we letting the elite get away with this when there are other needs in this great city and that there are many, many residents in this city that needs the help? We have elected all seven of you to work with the residents of this city. We elected the Honorable Mayor once again to help us. Central Allison Hill, Allison Hill, Uptown McClay Street Project, $154,000 to $155,000. And then they say with the nonprofits, we are going to help. It's an insult to tell an individual from this city that we may hire you after they get a grant. That's an insult. All I'm saying once again, if you're from this beautiful city, doesn't it make you feel bad? Don't you have something here that would make you look at people in the city? Because once again, and it has been said about Harrisburg, Pennsylvania over a week ago in a New York paper, Harrisburg, you have been lied to once again. You have been fooled once again. When will that city come and do what they have to do for their own residents? This is not Wall Street. This is Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is anyone else to my right?
My name is Reverend Frank Dutley, and I live at 1300 North Thursday Street Apartment, 301, and we gather in the market every market day, me and some guys, and I'm very concerned when it rains or whatever, you walks around there, the floors are very slippy. They don't care nothing about handicapped people. Several people are falling there because you has no railing and nothing to hold on, and God forbid when you go into the restaurant area, because it's full of water by people walking in there for rain or something, and you have no, shouldn't be railings in there for you to grab onto. They don't care anything about handicapped people in there anymore. And when you come to the outside, there should be some handicapped parking on the Burbank side going west for people to handicap people to park out there. They closed up all of the doors on us. It looked like the old ugly warehouse in there now, and we have to go way down to the other end to get out, but when we get out, we need to be able to cross the street, and the guys come, and if you come in the evening time and everybody's coming from the meal works, they try to run over you, and it comes one way, and they keep doing this stuff. And Sunday, I was sitting out in my truck, me and the grandkids, and about three people went down Burbank Street going east, and the police happened to catch the one guy going down through there and gave him a ticket, but this continuously continues to happen. We don't have no parking for us, and most of us are old and crippled and handicapping there. There's no handicap signs on this side of the street for us, and we have to crawl across the street. They already, we have to walk to the other end, and when it get hot in that place, it's going to be like the steel mill. They done closed up all the doors in this place. So we just asking somebody to come and look into this and do something for the handicapped people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yeah. Madam President, this thing which body endows me there with me for just a few minutes. I have to put on my signature. First here, and that's just what I have to do. Okay, first my obedience. My obedience to Almighty God, y'all, I'm going to give him his praise, because if it wasn't for him, no one would be here. I think we all could agree with that.
Would you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry?
Would you identify yourself?
Yes, of course. After, my name is Winston Michael Ray, and--
Your address, please.
My address is 611 Riley Street. As president, I'm staying at the Bethesda Mission, and I'm enjoying myself. This is part of a campaign that has been ongoing since January 12th entitled Operation Hobo. It's an acronym for Homeless Ones Barack Obama, and the president is tied into it, bless his heart. Oh, by the way, he's going to be working with us over the last eight months and four days of his administration, starting January 6th. Let me get to the point, because I don't want to take all your time, and I appreciate that I wrote you notes here. I just arrived here by way of my birth city, New Orleans, Louisiana, and I did my six-month final tour there, and, well, you know, I like talking to the Lord. I'm not ashamed to say that, no, 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 I'm not ashamed to say that. He said, "Wentz, I need you to high tail it on down over there up there to Harrisburg." I said, "Me?" He said, "Yeah, yeah, I want you to get on up there, and I want you to go and arrive there on May 21st by way of New Orleans and get with the governor," on which you faxed him when you were in New Orleans. Now, I talked to one of your staffers, and have you all received a copy of this by now?
Yes, we did, sir.
Okay, well, that's what you said, and it sounds exaggerated, but quite frankly, it's not. Ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to end revenue segregation and economic Jim Crow in the United States of America. Now, you have to have something to end that with. Well, we have a $100 billion marketing campaign. Well, let me expound on that a little bit. The math is there. Seven billion people walking the planet Earth, 1 billion out of 7 billion, even if it's sympathy sales, I have no problem with it. It's going to buy $100 every year worth of undeniable incontrovertible intelligence information I've been unwittingly for a long time putting together dating back to April 1st, 1985. Now, everybody loves the Lord, and there's a biblical passage that's going to get me in trouble, kind of remind me of what my counterparts said. In the '60s, socioeconomic counterpart Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, he told one of his aides, he said, "I'm going to throw myself off a cliff." Of course, that's a figure of speech when he decided he was going to speak out against the Vietnam War. Well, in a sense, that's what we're doing. Now, what I need, as I've shared in writing, where you read it, and I've been all in up in, that was beautiful Capitol, I mean, they really outdid themselves. The leaders of the Capitol, I've never seen such a beautiful Capitol building. We have a nice one in Louisiana, but it's no match for one here in Harrisburg. The governor's fully aware, and this is what we're asking the governor and the mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I never met you before. My name is Winston Michael Ray. What is your name, sir? Eric Pappas. Pappas, Mr. Mayor, well, I'm sure you have your copy as well. This is the deal, bottom line. June 6th, 13 days away, I need the whole world watching what we're doing from Harrisburg, be it at City Hall, preferably at the state Capitol with all 253 legislators in attendance. I heard that it reconvenes on, well, the senators will be back on June 6th, which is perfect, the House is already there. We stand together, and I want to give the state of Pennsylvania $2 billion. If, if Governor Thomas Wood stand with me in my, how do you like my clothing design? Y'all like that, huh? My clothes, I'm going to wear this. We're going to stand together and proclaim that Pennsylvania is the first city in the nation and the world to publicly embrace the worldwide silver, S-I-L-V-E-R, Silver Rights Movement. Now, I did something unbeknownst to fellow Louisianians on April 4th at 6:03 PM Central Standard Time, next to Martin Luther King Bus Statue, Claiborne Avenue in Felicity, New Orleans. I ended the civil rights era allegorically and somebody, but I know my time won't allow me to go into that, but now I would like response from you, Madam President, would this council, would this body be willing to help us end revenue segregation? We're talking about a campaign that will address the needs of the poor, gentlemen. We're talking about, closing note, we're going to pay up to $3,000 for 50 million Americans who are struggling to pay their stressed-out bills, getting homeless off the street. When the president get on that plane with his beautiful family and leave on January 20th, there will be zero homelessness in the United States. I'm resolved on it. We're going to set up the Capitol in Philadelphia, city of brotherly love. I can go on and on, but I really encourage you to meet with me, because we're moving at warp speed, and I intend to plaster your city with this before the week is out. So is there any way I can get back with you, Madam President, on this, or Mr. Mayor, and kind of put you on the spot to support us on civil rights, because we need Harrisburg, we need Pennsylvania, and other measures have been taken to put it on worldwide TV. I won't rely on the governor excepting my $2 billion offer. If he does, that's fine. If not, it'll still go worldwide, and I just saved $2 billion. Any questions before I leave you?
No, sir, we don't. Thank you.
And if you want to reach me, my cell number is area code 206-939-0797. I guarantee you, this is not the last you will hear of Winston Michael Ray and the Worldwide Silver Rights Movement. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Claiborne?
Hard act to follow. My name's Justin French. I'm from 7818 Skyline Drive in Harrisburg. I have been an employee of Harrisburg for over 30 years. When I first started here, the employment tax to work in the city was $10. In 2008, it was temporarily raised to $54, and we just found out recently that our LA need to maybe do some homework on this, because I'm a single mother who, even though $154 may not seem like enough, they keep coming back to the taxpayer time and time again, and it's a domino effect, because we might have United Way Campaign, which now people are saying, and I hear grumbling in my office, I'm like the spokesperson, you have no idea how people, it's like the straw that broke the camel's back, to just give us some assurance that if you're going to raise our taxes, is there any way that we could find out if there's also a corresponding cut in spending? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Daniel D. Graham, 217 North Second Street here in Harrisburg. First, I would ask, now, Sawyer's Outdoor Restaurant is going to have a music concert again this Thursday evening. I just ask you to please have the police there to make sure they keep their noise and music volume within the city noise ordinance, and to make sure they shut off the amplified music at the proper time, not later than 10:00. I understand the city ordinance takes effect at 10 o'clock, so please, again, make sure that they keep the volume, noise volume down low within the city noise ordinance requirement, and that they shut off the music again by 10 at the latest. Thank you. And another, my next issue is interesting. Now, I saw a small article in the Sunday Patriot News, May 22nd, this past Sunday, that said that-- Patriot News, May 22nd, this past Sunday, that said that regarding additional Amtrak train service from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh, I, it said, in the, one thing it said in the article was that the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation asked Amtrak about adding another train, another passenger train on this line from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh, round trip. So far, apparently, nothing has been done as yet, probably because of the, Amtrak would need to pay an extra fee to the Norfolk Southern Railroad Company, which owns the tracks, and also higher operating costs, they said, for operating an additional train there. Well, again, I say to City Council and Mayor Pavingfus, and to the state, to please support adding another, another round-trip passenger train on the line from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh, provide the, again, please provide the additional funding necessary from the state and from the federal government, if necessary. I suggest, for an additional train, I suggest run a morning train from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh during the morning hours, and then the, the, the return train from Pittsburgh back to Harrisburg, run that, run the return train in the afternoon. I suggest that leaving, have the train leave Pittsburgh like around the middle of the afternoon, between 2:00 and 3:00 in the afternoon, arriving back in Harrisburg sometime in the evening. It's a, it's a, it is, it is a beautiful, thrilling, five-and-a-half-hour ride on this Pennsylvanian train from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh. Very scenic. The train line goes on a long, curvy route going, going over the mountains. It's a beautiful, thrilling ride. I rode that train in previous years many times. And again, I, I suggest this schedule for a train running from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh in the morning hours, and then returning from Pittsburgh back to Harrisburg in the mid-afternoon hours, arriving back in Harrisburg in the evening. That way, I and other train passengers as well can make the train trip from Pittsburgh to Harrisburg in one day. We can make the train trip from Pittsburgh, from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh, and Pittsburgh back to Harrisburg in one day, and not have to go to the expense of staying overnight in Pittsburgh at one of those high-priced hotels. That would be good. The train we have now is good. It's on a good schedule. Again, again, it is a beautiful, thrilling ride, and, but, but, again, we can use one more train from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh, and Pittsburgh back to Harrisburg in one day. So, again, I ask, please support this effort from the city and the state, and, and I believe that a good number of people would ride on the second train as well as on the first train. Thank you much. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Anyone else in the middle, please?
Are you sneaking up from the right?
Excuse me, Ms. Wanda. She was outside getting information on how to address the council, so I was giving her a little bit of information.
Okay. She's a little nervous.
Hi, my name is Christine Hughes. I was just coming down here because...
Can you speak up, oh.
Hi, my name is...
Speak a little bit louder, please.
My name is Christine Hughes. I was just coming because a friend of mine told me to come down, Lisa, because I had issues with the school district about my son going to the prom. And they had me run around for like two days, Thursday and Friday. Then the last day, they told me my son couldn't attend his prom. So, but he still went out to this, to the red carpet. Then, he got detained Friday from his PL because something happened in school. And then, he had a hearing yesterday at Schaffner's, and I didn't know, again, once again, that they said he couldn't go to his graduation, walk the stage, get his diploma. They said he can get his diploma, but he couldn't walk the stage, stand, I mean, the stage. And, so I went to the school today, talked to the principal, because I didn't know. And soon I walked in, Ms. Jikan was like, "I'm mad at you." I said, "For what?" She said, "Your son came to the prom." I said, "But he didn't go in. He went with his date, they turned around, they left." But they, they told the girl, his date, that she can come in. And she was like, "No, we ain't going in." So, they turned around and left. So, I was like, so when I was going to get told that he couldn't, you know, graduate, she ain't say nothing. She said, "Go to the administrative building." So, I went down there, talked to Christina, and she told me, "It's not up to her, it's up to the school." I said, "No, I'm not running around back and forth, not for his graduation. I did for the prom." And so, I went down there, talked to her. She said, "She gonna set up a meeting." So, I sit there and waited, talked to Ms. Yolanda. She came down, and then her went to office and talked. She said, "This is not right. Something got to, yeah." And she told Christina that wasn't right for her telling me that the school district got to make the decision. It's gotta have a, you know, a group of people, and they got to decide.
Long story short, council, I think after this, someone should get, it's a little bit detailed, someone should talk to her and maybe give her some other advice, if possible, what to do. We know that the school district and the council aren't, but at the same time, maybe there's somebody else you can point her to, to get some other information.
And there's a school board member directly in back of you. Mr. Allen Kennedy Schaefer, you certainly can talk to him.
Okay.
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 Okay. Thank you, because the city, City Council has nothing to do with the city of Harrisburg School District. But Mr. Schaefer would certainly be willing to help you and certainly talk to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm, certainly I'm sorry that you experienced that. Anyone else in the middle?
Thank you, Madam President. Allen Kennedy Schaefer, 252 Verbeck Street. I wanted to, wanted to applaud the students from Harrisburg School District who partnered with City Council on the job shadowing and, and particip, and civic engagement. I think it's a terrific program, and I would also like to thank City Council for, for coordinating that. So, that's, that's wonderful, and it was great to hear from the students tonight. Also, on a, also wanted to, to just voice my personal, my personal support for Bill Kluck, a longtime friend, supporter of Harrisburg Hope, and like me, someone who asks a lot of tough questions, and although Bill knows far more than I do about, about how to get things done. So, I would voice support for Bill in terms of improvement, and, and has, has, has forged partnerships with institutions, including the Harrisburg School District, to test our water for lead, and it's reached out to the community and developed a, a great advisory committee. So, I would just voice support for Bill Kluck, who I think is, is the right, the right person for, for that job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the middle? Anyone else to my right, I'm a left, left. Come on, sir. Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Edward MacArthur. I live at 701 North Front Street. I first wanted to remind everybody, Arts Fest this weekend, and thank the city and the administration. I know we had some years where the festivals weren't as good as they could have been, and they seem to be back. My goddaughter turns three this weekend. I'm gonna take her down for that, and she's also particularly excited about the dynamite summer. Thank you for that. I wanted to speak on Bill 8 concerning the Police Complaint Board. First off, this is, would normally be a resolution that came from council, council forcing the executive of the police to do something like this. So, I'm glad that His Honor and the Chief are actually initiating this, so that the citizens can give them more information. I mentioned that even, I don't know if it needs to be in the bill, probably does not. It can be an initiative of the police themselves, but they should also be accepting commendation requests from our citizens. That's good information for the Mayor and his command staff. Referring to Council Baltimore's mentioning of the civilian review board, my idea is, we already have one. It's U7. Soon, all of the citizens are gonna be at least a civilian reporting board. I think we're, we're looking at how Baltimore, Baltimore's going. Right now specifically, we're very lucky here in Harrisburg, having the police we do, the citizens we do. And, unnecessary apologies to the police. If there's a media report next year that police complaints have gone up 1,000%, because they went from one to three, because we have this website, it's nothing against them. They're great, and they will know for sure. Resolution 40. All right. I am petrified as I stand here, because I want to encourage you to vote no, which puts me at odds with the Office of his Mayor and you, Madam President. I think it's a false choice that the administration has presented with these two candidates. I heard four of you speak exactly the same way on this issue when it was Resolution 30, but then your votes split two different ways. I think council is unified in knowing that there's something wrong with this issue. It broke down to three of you voted for Charlotte, or you voted for Bill, and I think all six of you are correct, because they were both willing to serve the city of Harrisburg. I don't think we should be having to choose between them, and that was not your choice. You were put in that position. I would suggest the Mayor that while there are open positions on any board or any commission or authority, I don't think it's proper to use his appointment power to cause this conflict, especially putting it in your laps. I can almost go one step further, since he's telegraphed that on the EAC, he wants to clear that out. As far as I know, there seems to be one member still on there who's ready, willing, and able to serve. If barring her resignation or her removal for cause, I don't see why she does not get to at least finish out her term. And to mention, while, again, while there are vacancies, I don't think this council should approve any replacement of any currently serving member. You are to, you're the legislative branch of our city. You're to give your advice and consent on his nominations. As it, you withhold your consent, give him the advice that he should be using his authority to appoint people to vacant positions. Then and only then, we could get back to the issue before you tonight. Until then, I don't think you should even have to make the choice, because the Office of the Mayor still has some work to do filling these seats. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else to my left?
Hello. My name's Chris. Do I need to say my last name, or can I just?
Yes, please, and your address.
Can I just be like Sharon Prince?
Pardon me?
I'm just joking. Chris McGraw, 400 Crescent Street. Is the camera rolling? Can I sing a solo? No, I'm just joking. Say, all right, get to the point. If I could sing, I would sing Children of Future. I'm here representing the children and even the handicap on Crescent Street. There's a lot of children on our block, and, you know, due to it being a crime area, you know, the parents don't really want them going too far out, and there's really not anywhere for them to play, so they ride their bikes and play, you know, in the street. It may not sound safe, but it is what it is. I came with this issue, believe, last year or year and a half ago, maybe two years, I'm not sure. However, you know, I addressed it, and unfortunately, the city councilwoman...
Former city councilwoman.
Former city councilwoman, thank you. And that's something, passed away, and, you know, I never really like furthered up on it. However, last year, three of little children, I call them my little buddies, I, you know, I have them like playing my yard and stuff like that, football. Three of them got hit by a car, by vehicles, and one actually, bike got dragged underneath the car, and they broke their arm. And, you know, this, this street here, for some reason, it's, you know, I don't know, is it Indianapolis 500 or 5,000? It's, the, the vehicles just fly up and down, you know, 30, 40, 50 miles an hour, and, you know, it's, it, it presents itself as a great hazard. And, you know, we've come up, I talked to a couple of the neighbors, and we talked about having stop signs put on the south side, in the north side of Crescent and Kidatini, and at Crescent and Swater. And we believe this would be an inexpensive solution to a potentially harmful problem that has the propensity or possesses the propensity for fatalities. And that's something. So, we ask for stop signs. Think that, you know, if you need, I can get some of the kids out there, we could dig the holes. And, you know, I think it's a very serious issue. Another thing, there's a couple of handicap people on our block, and, you know, there's a neighbor about two or three doors down, he could barely walk, and on the days of street cleaning, he actually has to go out in his car and ride around, because of the lack of parking, ride around for the hours that, from 12:00 to 4:00 on, I think it's Wednesdays or Thursdays, until street cleaning is over, just to avoid a ticket. So, I'm just, you know, asking if there could be something done to waive, you know, any tickets or fees that will be given to any of the legitimately handicapped that on Crescent Street, but there's like limited parking throughout the day and evening times. So, you know, those are just two issues that I'm presenting, and I would like to have a billion dollars from you. That'd be pretty neat.
Okay, sir. What block is this in?
That's it. Crescent Street.
What block?
Crescent, for the entire Crescent Street, from Mulberry to Berry Hill. And there's no stop signs. I mean, it's just like, it's a racecourse, basically.
Well, Mr. Johnson is our public safety.
I know Mr. Majors was out there.
Yeah, I was out there. Yeah, he's out there with me.
Okay.
We're working, we're gonna work with Wayne and to see if we can do some traffic calming and get a study done, so.
Yeah, and actually, soon as he left, like, it's one of those things where you're hurt, and you go to the doctors, and then the pain like suddenly goes away. Soon, soon as he left, it was like people were probably waiting around the corner, like they knew you were there. You know what I mean? Soon as you left, man, like, wow. You know, I called you and left a message on your phone. But thanks for listening to me. I appreciate the time. And how you doing, man?
I'll follow up with you, sir, because I just got some information last week, so.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else to my left? Thank you. Hearing, oh, I'm sorry. No, sir. No, sir. No, 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 sir. I gave you an opportunity.
I didn't want to speak. I just wanted to know, anyone who want a copy of this, you're welcome to.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, distinguished members of council.
Good afternoon, sir.
My name is Norman White. I'm the general manager and head coach now of the Pennsylvania Pharaoh's Pro Development Football Team. I understand there's a lot of issues, serious issues in the city, and they've all been addressed here. I imagine a lot today. Unfortunately, my GM and owner couldn't make it. He's in a meeting now, as I speak, for funding. I'm not here with my hand out, but I am here about City Island as a field for our team. We had... We had spoken.
Just a minute, Mr. Boyd, please, would you please give the respect? Go ahead, sir.
We are.
I'll read the change.
Thank you.
In the line.
Thank you.
Some of you will help, but some of you deny. Let that be noted.
Come on, Mr. Boyd, go ahead and read.
Have a good evening.
You too. Go ahead, Mr. Boyd.
We had lobbied before that the islanders had rights to the island, seeing that they have left. Our goal for the Pharaohs is to get these young men off the street. I didn't bring the text with me, but our general manager, Mr. Dykes, three young men text him saying, "Can I come play football for you? I'm tired of being on the streets selling drugs." We took them in, they haven't been out there since. We had a meeting yesterday with the Honorable Tom Carter, your Chief of Police. He asked me to relay the message to City Council, he is behind us 100%. Your Honorable Mayor, June 2nd, we have an Armed Forces Day at the island. We would like for you to do the coin toss, sir, at your convenience, if that's in your schedule. I would just like City Council to consider letting us have that field. I have a five-year contract as a coach. I am nervous as a long-tailed cat in a room full of rocking chairs about this, but these young men have seemed to be dedicated, they come to my practices, I'm old United States Navy, I drill them like Marines, I don't like Marines, but they're there and they keep coming, they keep coming and they're staying off the streets. I figure if we can keep them doing this, the crime may go down, not much, but it will go down, the less you have to put away, the more I have to play.
Thank you.
And I thank you for your time. Now let me get her if I get a ticket. God bless you all.
Thank you, thank you, oh my goodness.
Let me, I gotta come up.
As you all know, I'm Aaron Johnson, 1508 South 13th Street, Public Works Director. Before we make a decision on City Island skyline facility, we need to sit down and talk. I'm not gonna do that on the air, but we need to talk some history with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We certainly will do that. Anyone else? Thank you, moving on to approval of minutes. Approval of the legislative session minutes of May 10, 2016. Is there any deletions, corrections, or omissions, council members? Hearing none, minutes stand as such, approved. Moving on to report to committees, report from Chair Allen on the Budget and Finance Committee meeting of Wednesday, May 11, 2016. Mr. Allen, are you ready with your report?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Our Budget and Finance Committee meeting was held Wednesday, May 11. The presence were myself, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Baltimore, Mr. Majors, Ms. Daniels, and Ms. Williams. This was to discuss the budget reallocation that's up for vote, it was the second proposed budget reallocation for 2016. In it were some allocations that were initially misallocated in the budget, so they were doing some corrections. Also were some efficiencies that were put into place in terms of some changing decision in terms of renting a ditch, which, and actually having our consultants tend to do the work while they're doing the streetlights repair and project. Also were some salary adjustments for legal secretary, codes administrators, city engineer, and raising salary cap for commercial codes, this was in response to our most recent salary ordinance. Also up for reallocation was money to move to cover the principal payment amount for the LED streetlight loan due to the delay in the impact Harrisburg, where I know we're still waiting on a decision from them regarding disbursement of funds for that project. Lastly was Appendix D, which was actually introduced at the meeting and that was, if I get to it, was to allocate some additional money for the fourth and emerald fencing repair. There was some additional area that was needed that wasn't included in the original quote. Also for discussion that night was an update from the administration on the findings from the Alvarez Report and steps that they took to correct that going forward. Bruce made a presentation along with Bill to discuss some of the things that they've been working on within the administration and working with the City Treasurer's Office and just to convey some confidence as going forward, they listened, they heard, and they were acting. Unfortunately, weren't able to hear from the treasurer, unbeknownst to us at the time, he was in the middle of resigning, so we didn't know that at that time. But we will look to hopefully get a report from the treasurer's office to be able to act going forward. That concludes my notes.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. And as an update, the treasurer will be here June 15 to do his final report before council and administration. Moving on from report from Chair Johnson on the Public Safety Committee meeting on Wednesday, May 18, 2016. Mr. Johnson, are you ready with your report?
Yes.
Thank you.
A public safety committee meeting was held Wednesday, May 18, 2016, at 5:30 here at City Council Chambers. The two items that were up for discussion was Bill 8 of 2016, which basically was a bill addressing our citizens complaint process. We had thorough conversations back and forth with representatives from the administration as well as Captain Alavera. We have recommended a couple amendments to that legislation. One, one is the main amendment to that legislation is to have quarterly reports submitted to council rather than just a yearly report. And basically that would go over any complaints received by, well, there's two, any complaints received by the police department for the presiding quarter, if so, even if it's zero, we still want to report to say that's zero. And also, the second amendment, which was proposed by the administration, had to do with posting of the complaint form online. So basically residents will have the opportunity to go online and directly print it off and fill it out and get it notarized at a place of their choosing and mail it in or bring it in to City Hall in order to get that process started. You also can request the form through 311, so if you call into 311, the form can be personally mailed to you where you can fill it out, you know, within your residence. So those are the two main issues that we were looking at addressing within Bill 8 of 2016. The second thing that we discussed was Bill 6 of 2016, which had to do with the small amounts, the small amounts marijuana legislation. We had a lot of dialogue going back and forth. We got a lengthy, lengthy opinion from Mr. Baltimore. If you guys, if you guys would like a copy of that, I'm sure he'd be more than happy to submit it to you.
This is master's thesis.
And master's thesis on marijuana. But it was really, really good, and through that meeting, I was able to sit down and come up with a list of recommendations for amendments for that specific legislation. I submitted that to the Solicitor's Office as well as to the administration and Chief Carter to review those, to hopefully come to a consensus on which things that we can do legally and how to move forward. Some of the amendments included, included public space into the legislation as well as possibly looking at the fine structure and certain provisions for minors. But, you know, hopefully we'll get back to having another meeting on that to kind of finalize legislation to put forth through a vote. And that concludes my report from the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Moving on to ordinance for first reading, Bill 14, 2016, Mr. Claiborne.
Bill 14, 2016 was moved by Mr. Baltimore, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's an ordinance appropriating community development block grant funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2016 and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
That would be placed in Economic Development Committee. Moving on to Bill 15, 2016.
Bill 15 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Baltimore, seconded by Ms. Daniels, is an ordinance appropriating emergency solution grant program funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2016 and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
It also will be placed in Economic Development. Moving on to Bill 16.
Bill 16 of 2016 is moved by Mr. Baltimore, seconded by Ms. Daniels, is an ordinance appropriating home improvement, home investment partnership program, home funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2016 and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
That also will be placed in Economic Development. Ordinance for amendment, Bill 8, 2016.
Bill 8 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Baltimore, is an ordinance to amend the Title III, Chapter 3-301, Citizen Complaints of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, to update the procedure related to the City of Harrisburg's citizen complaint process in effort to make the process more accessible and thereby more inclusive.
Understand, we have an amendment to that?
Quarterly, on line 135, we are striking out NGR and capitalize under. On line 136, we're striking out N annual and on our, on.
Just a minute, we have an audio problem, he's trying to fix. Are we okay?
So we're striking out N annual and striking out N board and replacing that with a quarterly report to be presented. On line 137, we're striking out before April 1st of each year. On line 138, we're striking out calendar year and replacing that with quarter. And on line 140, we are striking out annual and we are replacing that with quarter.
Make a motion to accept those changes.
And I would like to make a motion to accept those changes.
Some of them.
So.
Any questions or comments on the amendment? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Is he sure we get to have this time?
It's on.
Okay. Moving on to ordinance or final passage, Bill 8, 2016, as amended.
Bill 8 of 2016, as amended, was moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Ms. Hodges. It is an ordinance to amend the Title III, Chapter 3-301, Citizen Complaints of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, to update the procedure related to the City of Harrisburg's citizen complaint process in effort to make the process more accessible and thereby more inclusive.
Any questions or comments on Bill 8 as amended? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill 8 as amended passes.
Thank you, moving on to resolutions, Resolution 33, 2016.
Resolution 33 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Williams. It is a resolution approving the second proposed 2016 budget reallocations.
We have amendment, Mr. Allen?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to insert into the Resolution 33, Appendix D, as was introduced in our Budget and Finance Committee meeting on Wednesday, the 11th.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please call the vote.
Resolution 33, as amended.
No.
I'm sorry.
On the amendment.
On the amendment for Resolution 33. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Now Resolution 33, 2016, as amended.
Resolution 33 of 2016, as amendment, as amended, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 33, as amended, passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 37.
Resolution 37 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Hodges. It is a resolution ratifying the maintenance agreements with CECO Incorporated to provide maintenance services for the mainframe cooling system in the city's Information Technology Department.
Questions or comments on Resolution 37? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you, moving on to Resolution 38, 2016.
Resolution 38 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Ms. Hodges. It is a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency on behalf of the Bureau of Fire for the purpose of funding a fire prevention and safety program that includes a door-to-door education campaign and installation of 3,000 smoke alarms in city residents.
That will be placed in Public Safety Committee? Can he wait?
Resolution 39 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Ms. Hodges. It is a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Department of Justice on behalf of the Bureau of Police for the purpose of funding the reimbursement of bulletproof vests for the city's police officers.
That also will be placed in Public Safety Committee. Moving on to Resolution 40.
Resolution 40, 2016, was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Hodges. It is a resolution approving, appointing Ms. Charlotte J. Plains to serve on the Capitol Region Order Municipal Authority Order Director to the CR Heavy Board.
Questions or comments on Resolution 40? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
No.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Hodges?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
No.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
The Resolution, yes.
Okay. Moving on to Resolution 41, I need a motion to bring that to the floor. It's a resolution authorizing, approving, the finalization, execution of an improvement cooperation agreement in the form of a memorandum of understanding, MOU, and related documents with the Pennsylvania Department of General Services, the DGS, to provide expanded sanitation service, services to Commonwealth facilities.
So moved.
Thank you. Questions or comments on?
Give me a second.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, right. Questions or comments on Resolution number 41? Any questions? Okay, I do.
Clarify that, or is the motion to add it to the agenda or is the?
Yeah, that should be first.
Yes, to add to the agenda, okay. Please call the vote to add that.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, please read that into record, please.
Resolution 40 of 2016 was moved by Ms. Williams, second, I'm sorry, Resolution 41 of 2016 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It is a resolution authorizing, approving the finalization and execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement in the form of a memorandum of understanding, MOU, and related documents with the Pennsylvania Department of General Services, the DGS, to provide expanded sanitation services to Commonwealth facilities.
Questions or comments, council members?
Just one comment, I will be excusing myself from the vote since I'm a employee of the Commonwealth.
Okay. Mr. Majors will be excusing himself because he is a Commonwealth employee, it's understandable. I do have one question, is anyone here for the administration to answer that?
Sure.
Okay, oh, okay.
Do you have a motion to suspend the ruse?
Yes, I have a question, motion to suspend the ruse for a minute?
Some of.
Oh, first and second, okay, thank you. Who's the contact person that this, this agreement will be going through here in the city of Harrisburg? I don't see any, I don't see it on page three.
Contact person?
Yes.
Would be David West, who is our Mandate Agent Director, he's the one who's working closely with the facilities manager for DGS.
Okay, and I see April 1st, 2016 is the effective date. Why isn't it today when we approve it will be the effective date?
Well, there's more money for it, and it as of April 1st. I, I think the idea was we reached the limit as of April 1st and they're willing to pay retroactively starting on April 1st as soon as it's approved by you all.
Okay, and then my third question there is to you. You knew about this agreement, why wasn't this not presented to council before we heard about it on 27, Channel 8, box?
Well, I thought it had already been sent down.
Excuse me, wait a minute, we always, we always get agreements or we always get resolution ordinance at the We always, we always get agreements or we always get resolution ordinance at the last minute and we hear it on TV before we hear it, I mean, before we have it in front of us. We didn't have an opportunity to read through this and I was really reluctant about putting it on the agenda tonight because I have not had an opportunity to go through this memorandum under agreement. So this is really something that I told you that we don't want to do. So you, as the executive branch, you should have contacted council and let us know this has happened. You have already executed that. You have met with it and you agreed to this. Why was not council informed of this beforehand?
It's not executed, but I had requested that legal send this down to you.
Today?
Before the announcements. No. They, they did not send it down unfortunately in a timely manner. That was, I think, an oversight on their part. But I.
That's my responsibility.
You take.
I certainly thought you had been informed and had had copies before, before we released in the media. In fact, when we issued the press release, we said that it would be on the agenda for tonight. So that was under the assumption that it had been sent down last week.
No. And certainly you two better communicate a little bit better. It's just really embarrassing to hear on the news two or three days beforehand that something like this has happened. This is major. This is money that's coming into this city.
This is really a wonderful thing.
We understand that. Understand that, but still.
The original agreement was entered into back in 1991, so 25 years ago, by the then city of Harrisburg and really had not been substantially reviewed or updated at any time over those 25 years. So as part of our ongoing audit of all sanitation accounts in the city, this account was brought to my attention by Aaron Johnson and David West and they conducted an audit along with DGS, literally doing it for Governor Wolf for being committed to making this a smooth and good process for the city. So they even agreed to start paying as of April 1st, as you've noted here tonight.
Yes.
So I am sorry that that was not communicated as I had intended it to be last week, but the good news now is for the residents, it's going to mean an additional $600,000 a year just in income. It's going to go from $300,000 a year to 900, over $900,000 a year just from the Commonwealth.
Now, thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Johnson, Mr. West, could you come forth? I have questions for you two as well, please. First, let me say thank you for your ongoing efforts to retract money from different entities that are owed to the City of Harrisburg. This certainly is a great deal of money that was outstanding that we certainly could have utilized two or three years ago. How many more accounts and how many more businesses are apartment buildings or do we have outstanding bills out there that we could recoup money from?
Yes, probably a couple hundred.
And we are actively going after them?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Remember, now the president, that's why we requested to get a lawyer collection, lawyers by trade.
Okay.
They got to negotiate, you know? And then we're talking about Dave says a hundred. It's a lot of money out there that we need to recoup. He was just not paying his bill.
And so we're actively going against them for not paying their bills? Are we going to actively move towards?
Definitely. As soon as we get that person hired in law, you know, so that's what you said, that's very time for someone, they need somebody that know the law, things like that. And again, we need to have some teeth, you know, because our problem is like when water was with the city, we could shut the water off. That was our teeth. As soon as they CRW now, we don't have that teeth right now. And people just say, I ain't paying trash bill. Remember, because water and trash were together.
Right.
That was our teeth right there. Now that that's gone, people just say, I ain't paying no trash bill, but we got to pick the trash up because it's a hazard, you know, a hazard.
Okay. All right.
And I'll just, those are slightly different issues. As far as I know and we know, there are no other large outstanding contracts that need to be renegotiated. What Aaron's referring to are individual property owners that perhaps are not paying what they should and, but they're being assessed the bill on a monthly basis. So that's something that we continue to struggle with. The good thing about this process with the Commonwealth has been they agreed right from the start that it was time to update and it hadn't been done in a timely manner and they are willing to pay their fair share. And I believe it will have an impact for all residents in that next year, once this audit has been completed and once we're able to fully determine both our needs and our revenues, we should be able to see a revenue decrease, I mean, a rate decrease for everyone.
For the residents?
I think so.
I still see Penn Waste and Waste Management coming into the City of Harrisburg, so we didn't recoup all our money. So there's still some.
No, the, so.
There's still some businesses out there that we need to address, right?
There's the three-phase process.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the first phase is March, the second phase is December, and the third phase is June of 2017.
Okay.
So you will see this phased out.
Okay.
For that entity of property.
And of the 80 or so accounts that we phased in back in March, I'm pleased to say that the customer satisfaction has really been through the roof. And that's a testament to our team and all the new hires that we've made as of the budget. So we've had a very seamless transition for all of those accounts. I think the overwhelming majority, all but three are currently in good standing in terms of their billing. That's only three out of 80 that aren't up to date in their billing. I got that report today. So that's been, that's been an incredible success and Dave West is already at work on making sure that the December transition is equally smooth.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, did you have something to say? The mayor was speaking.
What do we have, where are we at as far as, I guess, our revenue projection of what we actually were looking to collect for this budget year? Are we like on track or?
We're on track and this additional payment from the state is, is going to put us ahead.
Okay.
It hasn't come through yet, but as soon as you pass the resolution, we send it a signed copy back to them, they sign it, we will then adjust their billing and they'll, they'll not only stay current at the new rate, but they'll also pay retroactively to April 1st.
All right. That's it.
Any other questions?
When did you guys start negotiating with, with the state?
In January. So at the beginning of this year. It took several months to do the actual audit and reach a consensus and agreement over time as to how much, how much trash and volume was being produced.
Okay. Because the reason I ask is because obviously this is a rather extensive agreement and in the early part of this year, as a body, we were asked to make decisions about the future of the city and this is a substantial amount of money, right? This is almost a million dollars extra, which is really great news, but we're also making decisions. Were you, your side of government knew data that our side of government didn't have? And I'm really not appreciating the lack of information that's being conveyed to council. We're being asked to make information, decisions based on information that you provide, which is pretty, it's pretty consistently incomplete and not reliable.
Well, we didn't negotiate the new agreement until just now. We knew that we were going to commence an audit in January of the Commonwealth. We did not know what that audit was going to yield and, and how much of an adjustment it was going to be.
Go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Daniels. How are we able to inform council about an audit like this when we don't have any information on it? You know, we had to gather all the information and have meetings and come to a consensus. There's a lot of accounts that's like.
Right.
That we have to attend to, so should. We come to council with the, the other commercial accounts, over 100 commercial accounts that we still have to address yet.
I mean, obviously the Commonwealth is a really large client. You have several, I mean, in this, in this city, there will be a few clients that are huge, right? And have a significant impact on our bottom line. So what I'm faulting here is the administration's inability to bring us in to know that, hey, this is a huge deal that will be happening, similarly to the, well, yeah, yeah. So, so that's really where the issue for me is because we're being asked consistently to make really, really tough decisions and we're, we're having to make them without the really knowing what's happening. And that's, that's my concern.
I don't know what decision you would have made differently, but this was a sensitive negotiation. It's one that required the input of, I'm sure, the governor, department heads. They did not have to agree to this, but they were willing to do it as we work with them and I think we came to council as soon as we had a draft agreement and it's before you to, to see now.
Yeah, but Mayor, let me just say this. I understand what Ms. Daniels is saying. We always do everything at 12:00. And that's why I'm standing, sitting here to saying to you, you knew ahead of time that you were having these discussions with them. You could have met in the executive session to inform council even before this came out, even before you sent the information to the solicitor to have this resolution set down to the city council office. You knew about this and I just don't like being blindsided when Penn Live, the newspapers, TV stations know about this and we're sitting there like, wow. We're asking, we're giving calls.
Well, that was a mistake.
We're giving calls and they're asking us questions and we know, we have no idea what they're talking about. So I understand what Ms. Daniels is saying that, you know, you're asking us to, and now you're asking us to approve this, it's not even on the agenda. I was very reluctant about doing this, but I know this is, this is a great deal of money. It's an important issue and when it comes to the citizens of Harrisburg, it's my first priority and that's why I'm doing this.
I think it was important to DGS that we keep the negotiations confidential until we, we had an agreement. They.
That's fine, but you can have an executive session, be confidential with the city council. That's the only thing I'm asking. We can have an executive session, which is confidential.
Well, I regret that you were not informed.
Okay.
A week or two ago.
Well, I would like if you would do, you know, from here on, with things of this nature come up, I would ask that you meet with us in executive session to, to let us know, inform us about what's going on before it comes down to this council and asking us to approve it. We have no idea what's in this agreement because I didn't have an opportunity to read it yet. And I certainly don't like to approve anything that I haven't read. Mr. Alec, I see that you're, want to make a statement.
The only comment I'll make in this, it is significant, obviously this is good news for the city, even better news for the city is how immediately we can turn this into savings for our residents. So I really would caution us with this revenue increase, let's try to offset it with something that would balance it out with our residents in terms of what they've been paying. So the sooner we can do something like that, I think that's a good thing. I understand we need revenue, we need to look at that, but with something like this, wouldn't it be a great thing to have, announce this as revenue and then be able to reduce the cost to our residents?
Yeah, I think we just need a little more data. We're going to have our, our audit completed by the end of this year. We will then have some months under our belt of, of revenue. We'll have completed the second phase, which is the, the majority of all of the private accounts. And we will have our, our long-term capital improvement needs assessed for sanitation. So when we get to discussing the budget next year, I think concurrently with that, we can also revise or at least look at, at our rate, our rate chart as well.
And we're going to hold you to that only because it's, it's just important. We've, I mean, to, I think, Shemane's point, keep in mind, it was a month ago, we had to vote on the LST increase and that is something that we all had a stomach as a big, big deal. So when we have things like this that come up, my first concern is to make sure that our residents get that relief first and foremost.
Right. Of course, this is not going to the general fund and that's different, but I understand with the idea of relief for our residents, I think that's very important.
Okay. Then my point was made.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, council members? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. West. Thank you, Mayor. Motion to go back into agenda business?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Since there's no other questions or comments, please call the vote. Mr. Claypoint?
Mr. Alec?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yep.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Ms. Williams? Yes. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to, a motion from council to accept the resignation of our treasurer, Terrell Spradley.
So moved.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Please call the vote.
Mr. Alec?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yep.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. Thank you.
Carries.
Moving on to old business, council members, are there any old business? Moving on to new business, council members, are there any new business?
There's a Building and Housing Committee meeting, May 26th, this Thursday, at 5:30. So if people, if citizens could attend and also council members, since this has been an ongoing legislation, if you.
Okay. Any more, any other new business?
Just a reminder, I have a public safety meeting tomorrow at 6 o'clock here in city council chambers. It has to do with a street vacancy. So that's tomorrow, 6 o'clock.
Any other new business?
On June 7th, Parks and Recreation Committee will have a meeting here in this room at 5:30. And also I had the privilege to go out with Miss Jackie Parker around to the five playgrounds that were being renovated and despite the rain that day, we did have participation at all of the parks and a high turnout at Royal Terrace.